Right, thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thanks, Peter. Alright, thanks, Peter. Thanks for bringing it up, appreciate it. Next on our agenda is consent agenda. Is that something we can put up on the screen? Do I need to read it off? Oh, no, it's big enough.
You can go ahead.
Want me to start reading?
We don't have to read it because it's a consent agenda.
Okay.
If you want to do it.
Okay. Well, I think it'd be fair that we read it so that the people know what we're going to do. Right.
We've always put it on the screen in the past, just so it was visible.
Yeah, so if we can't do that, I'd be more than happy to quickly read it over. The consent agenda, accept the regular session minutes from March 14th, 2016, March 30th, 2016, August 30th, 2016, November 28th, 2016, July 11th, 2020, June 2nd, 2021, and June 16th, 2021. Accept executive session minutes from May 25th, 2016, August 30th, 2016, October 5th, 2016, January 3rd, 2018, September 12th, 2018, March 3rd, 2021, and June 2nd, 2021. Accept the resignation of Jamie Tripp, Associate Member of the Town Forest Committee. And Jamie, thank you for your service through the community, we greatly appreciate it and wish you well in your new endeavors. Approve the request for Christopher Brown for Block Party on Windsap Road on September 11th, 2021, between the hours of 4:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. Arrangued date is September 12th, 2021, then the same hours. And the applicant has and understands that he needs to comply with all the stipulations put in place by the DPW, Fire and Police Departments. Accept the grant funding from Massachusetts Health Officers Association, the amount of $2,500 and $1,500. This grant will be used for COVID expenses, supplies, and salaries. Accept the 911 Department Training Grant Program in the amount of $16,444. And lastly, approve the request for Greater Lions Club to hold a White Can Toll Road on Saturday, October 2nd, 2021, from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. That's one of their major fundraisers in town, and they usually do main and union.
So a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's 4-0-1 absence. Okay, very good. Moving on quickly, old and new business authorize the chair to sign the easement agreement with the YMCA.
If you go into it, yeah, okay. So it is an easement that we needed to construct the Trolley Brook Trail. Many thanks to the Reverend Ferrison and the board at the YMCA for voting to approve this. Many thanks to Jen who did a lot of work on our end to make it happen as well. This was accepted at the last town meeting, or excuse me, I should say, the town meeting authorized the board to move ahead with this. So you see the easement document, I think it's pretty straightforward, and so we just need a vote to authorize the chair to sign the easement agreement.
I move that we approve the chair to sign the easement agreement with the YMCA for Trolley Brook Trail.
Second. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's 4-0-1 absence. Thank you, and I suppose I can sign that tomorrow at the office if it's available and ready to go? Okay. Great, be happy to do it. Next on all the new business is the appointment of Town Council, Mead Tallerman and Costa LLC. Would you like to?
Sure.
Give a brief synopsis of?
I will. So a couple of meetings ago, the board performed their review of Town Council. During the discussion of that review, there seemed to be support to reappoint Mead Tallerman and Costa as Town Council for another year. So I've taken the liberty of drafting an appointment letter pending the board's vote if you want to continue to move forward in the manner that you said at the last meeting.
Any questions or comments or concerns? No, we're good? Okay.
I move that we approve the appointment of Town Council Mead Tallerman and Costa LLC.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's 4-0-1. Congratulations and look forward to working with Lisa and her group again, hopefully in person. Okay. Racial Equality Project Update, Survey and Focus Groups.
Sure. I'll actually let Jen expound on this a little bit more, but I think all of you recall that we started doing some focus groups earlier in the summer. Some were well attended, some were better attended than others. What came out of that is the fact that we probably needed to expand our reach and expand opportunities for people to provide feedback. So, working with Suffolk, a racial equity initiative group, has put together a survey that people can take if that's how they would like to participate, or they can register for, are we calling them focus groups? We're additional focus groups that we're going to be having. We have a flyer here that is already starting to be distributed throughout town. What I'll do is I can send these to you, and if you could send them out to your network, that would be greatly appreciated. Jen, do you want to add?
We're trying to increase our outreach a bit, so we did an initial push early June, just as school was sort of ending and the summer started, and I feel like we missed a lot of folks. We regrouped and decided that it's more important to sort of make sure that we have some time to do outreach. So, we also heard it's just sort of hard for people to commit an hour in the middle of the day or in the evening, and so in talking with Suffolk, the survey obviously will be self-select yourself to participate. We'd appreciate it if you participate in a focus group, they're basically the same questions. So if you participate in a focus group, you don't have to do the survey, it's just an opportunity to provide more people an opportunity to answer the questions, very similar format, it's just you won't be able to have a conversation about it. We will leave that open for, through the entire month of August. So we weren't able to get our dates for the focus group in the local town pages just because of the print, but we did say, you know, we did put the link in there for the survey. It's on our website now, so you can just click to register for a focus group, or I believe the survey is already live, so we'll just really do a big push starting next week.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I had the, it was funny, I signed up for one of the surveys, or one of the groups, figuring I'd go and listen to hear what people were saying, and I wound up doing a lot more talking than I expected because it was myself, someone from the YMCA who was also there to listen, and maybe one resident, if that, and then, you know, the two professors from Suffolk and their assistant, and so, yeah, I'm glad to hear that you are extending this because I think it was done sort of not enough information and not enough push out, so I like the idea if we can get all the flyer. I would also say, if, you know, if we can get it up, I'd be willing to talk to someone and do a little interview on Around the Clock and push it out to as many social network areas as possible.
Absolutely, yes, so we have some planned social media outreach, we've also asked members of the steering committee to reach out to a certain number of groups so that we can have specific asks of each, of, you know, several groups and community groups or committees, so that we can try to make a broader reach, so people, if they're not paying attention to social media or checking our website, that hopefully we'll be able to reach them. We've, now that people are physically coming in, we've posted it at the community center and the library like we used to, and we asked those folks to send it out to their distribution list as well.
I would also say we should reach out to the schools and see if Mr. Adams and the schools would be willing to put the flyer out through their email distribution list because they hit a lot of different people.
Absolutely.
Any interest at the farmer's market to either, you know, to market, you know, we can certainly do the, do, through our mailing list, but, you know, maybe some presence at the market might be advantageous.
Yeah, I don't think, what did it say, any news is, or any publicity is good publicity or something? So any way that we can promote this through using different vehicles, I think is important.
Sure, so let me know if I can certainly coordinate it for you.
Right, you could do, I mean, the professors came at all different times, you could schedule one for a Saturday morning at the market and promote the heck out of that.
Right. Absolutely.
One of the focus groups is actually a Saturday, we did it inside at the community center only because having it at the corner spot, just traffic and people, some of the feedback that Suffolk did receive was that, you know, it was outside, they wanted to have an inside weather, so we did it at 9:30 and then people can go over to the farmer's market, so certainly we tried to be cognizant of all the things that go on in town.
No, but I mean literally have a session scheduled at the market one Saturday, because there's that space at the, at the end.
Right, we have the town table, right? There's all the tent.
Well, I think, I think they booked that, but there's space at the end of the market where you could probably do something.
And I think to go to Jen's point, there's probably some sense of wanting some privacy with something like this, you know, so maybe, you know, you do it in the library and it's, you know, kind of coordinate it that way.
Yep.
Just a quick question, are you guys doing a virtual option too if people want to participate in a focus group via Zoom?
Yes, so the Wednesday, so we did Wednesday, we did a weekday at noon, hoping that if, you know, if you're working, you're able to take a lunch break, or that way we didn't have to do early morning or evening, just, you know, just knowing that people's schedules are really hectic, and so that's a virtual option.
How many, how many focus groups are scheduled? Because I know last time they had done quite a few, which, you know.
Yeah, so, and like, you know, and sort of looking at a, like after action after we did it, and we almost provided too many options, so you ended up having one or two people, so they consolidated, looking at sort of where the most interest was initially. We looked at three, so again, a couple on a Saturday, and then, I'm sorry, a couple on a Wednesday, one in the evening in person, one virtually, and then in early morning Saturdays, hopefully catch people before they really sort of start all the errands or their, their day.
And I don't want to discount the survey option either. If people don't feel like they can take the time and make that investment of time to go and participate in a focus group, I think the survey does a good job of balancing brevity with substance, and so again, if people don't feel like they can invest that time going to a focus group, I'd encourage them to take a survey.
And to go to Steve's point, a lot of people like that privacy aspect of it as well. So during the survey, you don't have to sign it or whatever, and it can just get that feedback and go that way.
And it goes to Suffolk, so we don't receive, so Suffolk will do, we'll end up getting the raw data so that we can actually see it, and there's some demographics that we can look at, but we won't necessarily receive the survey results. And there is an opportunity, there are some open-ended questions, so that if you did want to share something more than, so, most of the questions will be sort of multiple choice, but there are opportunities to share more.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? We're good? Alright, moving right along. Update on the police chief process, and I see that we have, we've opted to take Badge Quest, that this is their proposal, do we have to vote on this?
So this is?
Yeah, this definitely is an old one.
As I, as I'm reading the agenda, I'm like, oh, that could be read a completely different way than what I had meant for it to be. We've been talking about, obviously, the process of appointing a permanent police chief. Currently, Rich Briggs is serving, and I think very well, as our interim chief right now, or acting chief. One of the things board members and I have discussed as we've kind of gone through this process, or knew that we were going to come to this process or this point, is the benefits of utilizing an outside firm versus doing everything in-house. And I thought really to have an educated discussion on that, I would pull out an actual proposal, the one that we actually used back in 2013, when we went through the process that ended up having Chief Davis come here. And just so you got a chance to look at what's provided during that, during that process. As you see, it's about a 16 to 17-week timeframe as part of this. These are now costing between 20 and 30,000, so it's not an insignificant amount of money. Trying to think, it, you know, obviously some of the pros are, is that you have some objectivity or some distance between, you almost have like a neutral disinterested party kind of running the show and the operations, still allows us the opportunity to present our feedback, also our opportunity to get community input on what people would like to see and achieve. And then, one of the, one of the exercises that are performed here is an assessment center, and so a firm would generally put together an assessment center, which is basically a test of skills for different applicants who get to a certain stage in the application process. You know, that's certainly, I would envision any process that we utilized, whether it's internal or external, we would take the opportunity to get input from key stakeholders and then input from the community, and use that to formulate whatever measures that we're going to use to evaluate police chief candidates on, whether that's an external, or whether we use an external person to help with that process or an internal person, or we just do it internally. But really, I wanted to get the board's feedback on this, and just kind of what some of your thoughts are, is I'm kind of factoring in what the direction we're going to go in.
Want to go first?
Go ahead. So, you know, clearly, the, you know, kind of the public component, I think, is going to be important in this process, and, you know, just reviewing the proposal from 2013, that that is part of this, but I think very important that we stress that. Question that I do have is the, kind of the interview process, and, you know, I know ultimately that this is your decision to make, but it seems like other communities do employ kind of almost a search committee in a sense, and, you know, I don't know what the ideal makeup would be of a search committee, it probably is going to be a board member, a, somebody rank and file from the, from the police department, citizens at large, that kind of thing, so to me, I would think we'd want to go in that route. I don't know if that's your thinking about it, but I think that would be important in kind of today's environments. So I think that, to me, I mean, the rest of it seems to be not cookie cutter, but the assessment center seems to be a pretty long-term entrenched way of evaluating, you know, positions like this, so, but I would think we'd also want to have some feedback into the kinds of questions we're going to ask the candidates as well. I know this proposal interviews all of us here, I think that's super important, and they probably want to, you know, maybe have additional stakeholders being interviewed by Badge Quest, so, you know, those are kind of my thoughts.
That's very good, I think that's, I've, I was part of that process, I don't know who many, who else was part of that process, of course, I was sitting on the other side of the table as a, not a participant, but as a viewer, and it was interesting to watch how, how it was going, because after each individual, and I think it came down to the three finalists, if I remember correctly, the board was able to ask, you know, an interview and question all of them, and it was very good because each one, by the time we all went back and discussed it and, you know, what do you think, and this and that, and everything else, and we're almost all aligned with everything that was, that was being said and done. So it's kind of important that, one, you do get everybody involved, especially on the board here, but I also think it's very important that those that do the interviewing, don't forget those that are going to be supervised. I think everyone within the department should have some, some, because they're stakeholders in this as well, and they need to, and I think they all need to be, you know, you know, spoken with, you know, about their opinions, this and that and everything else, because they're the ones that are working daily, day-to-day, and, you know, it's to get that collective thought process as to yea or nay, or strong points, weak points, who better than those people that are working day-to-day type of deal? So, I would just make sure that that's part of that, that package as well. Yolanda?
I had a good conversation with Michael about this, because we weighed the, sort of looked at doing it internally versus bringing someone in, and as I reviewed this proposal that we got from Badge Quest last time, it made me a little bit more toward using an outside company to do it. I think the plan they lay out, the process they lay out, the, the decision to talk to all the different groups and all the people that are going to be involved and, and who might be impacted by this decision and by this hire, I think it does a couple things, it gives it a little bit more sense that it's much more impartial, and I think with how things are going on in society right now, having that, and I don't like this word, but the transparency of using an organization that is, doesn't seem to have any fingers on it, right, whereas if you do it internally, it might not have the same perception from the public. And I think, to Steve's point, having the public involved, having that discussion with the citizens as to what do you want to see in a new police chief, I think that's important. You know, I think, you know, Rich Briggs is, it's, he's done a great job so far as our acting chief, and to have him go through this process, I think, if he then gets the appointment, and again, I don't know what's going to happen, I think it'll make it more valid from a perspective of the citizens, as well as even for him to know that it's been a more thorough process. I like the timeline they lay out, and I think when you're bringing on a new position, it's, it's worth spending the money to do a thorough process, and, you know, one of the other things that Michael had mentioned when we were talking was he said, you know, a lot of times the people that they put into it are maybe older retired police officers, well, maybe as part of our, if we decide to go with them, or, you know, I know we have to put out an RFP, when we, when they go to do and select who's going to be part of the process from their perspective, we can say, can you try to include either younger people or people who have a different perspective on policing? Because I think how people look at policing is changing, so we want to make sure that when we hire a new chief, there's someone who can do what is being done now, but also can move and change and look at different ways, and sort of think outside of the box in what we want for a police chief for Ashland.
Good point. Brandy?
So I would agree, I completely agree with Yolanda, I think that as I read the proposal, and obviously I wasn't part of the, the last round of searches, but I liked how thorough of a process it was. It, it, you know, the public input, I think, is incredibly important. I think that they, it seems like a third party would cast a wider net than possibly we could internally. Maybe that's not true, but, you know, my thought is that the way that they had laid out, you know, a 16, 17-week process, it was, it was incredibly thorough, and I think, to Yolanda's point, I think that, that we need to make sure that we are very thorough in how we conduct the search. So I think, personally, I think it would be money well spent to, to make sure we have the best candidate for Ashland, and not just a good police chief, but the best that we can, that we can bring to Ashland.
I concur, I think it's the well-spent money, and again, Yolanda, you brought up that, you know, it's, it's not only fair to the, to the community as a whole, but it's also fair to the individual who is currently in the acting position, and there's no biases when it comes to this, that, or anything else, no, you have an outside agency that's looking at it just as it is, as fact, as fact-based type of deal, and you want that, you don't want anything else to come into play with that, so.
Yeah, I think it's all good feedback. One of the things I want to reiterate, you know, just, but I think Rich has done an incredible job so far, and I don't want to let this discussion be interpreted by anybody out there in the public that we think that he is not doing a good job, and that's, you know, that's why we're doing this. I think there's a lot of, a lot of good points that are being made, and I think there are some, some benefits also of doing it internally, and not saying just hire from within, obviously there's some pros and cons with that, but just managing the process internally, I think there's some benefits to that, but I wanted to have the conversation with the board and kind of get your feedback and thoughts on it, and this has been very helpful.
Yeah, it seems also, Michael, that the, you know, using a firm like Badge Quest or any of the other firms out there, that, you know, they just draw from a, from a much wider pool as well, you know, so the opportunities for just, just are greater, so, and I, you know, I agree completely with Yolanda's comments, particularly about the, kind of the validation of the process, I think that's really an important component here.
I don't disagree. 300%. Sounds good.
So, I will hope to have a, like, full process put together at one of our meetings in August.
Okay, we don't have to vote to give Michael the authority to use Badge Quest or anything of that, right? Okay.
Well, just to question that, I mean, there are other organizations, and are we going to look at, you know, competitive quotes on something like this?
Don't we have to put an RFP out for this? Yeah, so, yeah, we'll put the RFP out and then we'll get different proposals back.
Yeah, we have three, I think, from the last.
And we picked Badge Quest.
We had three at the last time, you said generally they're very, very similar in scope, so.
Thank you. Alright. Discuss the stormwater issue from Legacy Farms in Hopkinton.
Okay. So again, one might be asking if it's happening in Hopkinton, why is it on an Ashland Select Board agenda? Which would be a fair question. Unfortunately, as we, as we know, all too often, projects that happen in other communities have a regional impact, and, you know, the same thing for projects in Ashland, it has a regional impact. And so this Legacy Farms project in Hopkinton has had several, and I think we could classify them as negative impacts, whether, you know, some you could call them inconveniences, like increased traffic, but this one is a little bit more serious. Unfortunately, the contractor who's building out part of Legacy Farms, it, pretty much abuts the Hopkinton reservoir, which of course, we get our wells, or our water from wells underneath there. And so what we have seen, as that project has gone on, is really, and we've had to increase the use of our treatment chemicals and things like that over the winter, so a good example, we usually have an ozone, ozone filter, that's, usually we have that rest during the winter months, but I don't know, I mean, sometimes you'll see comments on Facebook every now and then, or other social media where people talking about the water and like it smells funny or it looks funny. A lot of that can be attributed to manganese, and so, one of the ways that you treat that is you use ozone, or O2, and so we've had to increase our usage of that. After this last storm event, we, Elsa, which, where we had the Public Safety Building wash out, there was also a very serious breach at Legacy Farms, and what we saw was that water was carrying silt sedimentation into the reservoir, and Doug and Dan Mauer both believed that, and our water treatment plant operator, both believe that that is contributing, heavily contributing to some of the issues with our drinking water, which again, aren't safety issues, but certainly the finished product, we want to be representative of. We went to look externally the way we know it is internally, and obviously it's costing us more to treat as well. Hopkinton pays a portion of that, but still we bear the brunt of it. So what has happened is that our Conservation Commission and Hopkinton's Conservation Commission have issued cease and desist work orders for the project, they have also enacted enforcement orders. I do think it's going to need to get discussed, what already has been at the town manager level, but quite possibly we might need to bring the boards in to have a discussion about this, because I think we're going to need to look at some pretty severe to look at some pretty severe sanctions, I think, in order to get this under control and to get everybody to take it seriously. So I just wanted to brief you on that.
What's the timeframe right now, Michael? If this, you know, there's, there's a cease and desist order, so they're not doing any work, at least in that area.
Hopefully.
And so what's the process here? And when are the Conservation Commissions going to determine their course of action? And when would we potentially meet with the Select Board?
Well, the Conservation Commissions, I'm sure are going to have this on their next meeting as well. And I do know that at least members of our Conservation Commission went to the Hopkinton Conservation Commission the next night and brought this up too. So, and, you know, Norman and I have exchanged calls and emails. So everybody is aware of it. Again, getting everybody to take it as seriously as we're taking it is another thing. So I think what we'll look at is what we can accomplish through the enforcement order process and through the Conservation Commission process. The next step, you know, I think we need to ask Hopkinton to, you know, be a little bit stricter on Legacy Farms, maybe look at not issuing occupancy permits until this is resolved to everybody's satisfaction. I do know that one of the things that we're talking about is getting an outs, having Legacy Farms pay for an outside scientist, outside consultant to come and give us input and help provide a, basically a management plan for this. So, and I think everybody's on board with that. So we'll see if that makes it into the enforcement order. I think we would all support that and move on from that point.
Well, I'm not sure that whatever happens, I just want to make sure that it's not affecting our water supply in any way, shape or form, because if it affects us, it's affecting theirs as well. And the last time I had the conversation with Doug, and I think you were present as well, they were talking about the ozone filters maybe being used once or twice a week. Now it's every day. Did you mention that? I'm sorry, I was out of the room. I'm sorry. So, I mean, to me, that's a concern. That is a big concern. So hopefully we can, that can get resolved in some way, shape or form. But it's not going to be an easy task.
No, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. This isn't just like putting some flock logs and.
Oh, no.
And, you know.
Well, that, I mean, what they're doing for construction is right above our, the reservoir. I mean, it's amazing what they've done up there. And, you know, they clear cut and cut stuff. And it's crazy, the number of homes that are up there.
I don't know if you had the opportunity to go up there. We drove up there the other day. It was actually that Sunday after we had all that rain. And there's a one back water basin that's right to the top. I mean, if we had any more rain, and that's, and if you look at the location of it, it was like, holy macro. It's right back down into where we were, you know, looking right at the water treatment facility in that area. So that's, it needs to be corrected. And you're right, they need to take it seriously. I don't know if they really are or not, but wow.
Well, hopefully it doesn't get to the point where there's legal action that needs to be taken.
Let's hope not.
You know, that would be unfortunate. But I think we need to be prepared to do that.
And are we, are we getting the sense that obviously our Conservation Commission is taking it seriously, that Norman is taking it seriously and it's been brought to their Select Board and they're willing to work with us?
To the Select Board?
Okay.
Yet. I don't know if it's been brought to their Select Board. But.
I'd have no problem sitting down with the chair along with Michael and Norman and with Hopkinton's chair to sit down and say, you know, collectively, let's work together on this.
Chair to chair or someone, it doesn't necessarily be chair. I know one of the members of the Select Board that I can reach out if you want.
Fine with that. I think, one thing that I was going to say that forgotten, that slipped my mind. Oh, you know, we're in a unique position now because we are, I think the end of our IMA with Hopkinton to provide them water is a few more years. I think it's like 2024, 2025. And so I know that they want to extend that because a majority of their water still comes from, from our wells. So, you know, I think that's something that we need to keep in mind and keep in the back of our mind, that, I mean, collaboration here is beneficial for everybody, not just now, but in the future. And, but that's one point I wanted to make.
Okay. Any other questions, comments with respect to the issues up there off of House Street? We're good? Okay. Thank you. Moving right along with a little business.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Arpa. Arpa. So the next item on the agenda is really in regards to our ARPA funding that's coming in and how some of you have thought about potentially spending it. I will tell you that we're getting 1.8 million in direct allocation from the federal government. We're also getting 3.4 million as our share of a county allocation. So it's about 5.2, 5.3 million dollars. So I know everybody is looking at that with big eyes and as well everybody should. But I did ask the board for some comments or some thoughts about what they would like to see this used for. And I will say that there are restrictions on the use of these funds. Part of my job is to make sure that, you know, all the ideas that we have and that we want to potentially move forward with, I can create that type of tie creatively, which I can, on many of the things that I've seen so far. But I wanted to start thinking about that as well. I have seen support for, in most of these, I think we can certainly accommodate, land acquisition, finishing some of the projects that we currently have outstanding, the Upper Charles Trail, operational funds. There hasn't been much support, I think, for operational funds. And that's good because the more Brittany works on this, the less she's seeing opportunity to use these for operating funds. So that's good. We can't use it to offset the tax rate. We can't use it to replenish stabilization funds or sock it away into retained earnings. But again, those are some of the things that I've heard. And, you know, we talk about outstanding projects, you know, the downtown project, the Valentine project, the Warren Barn, obviously Upper Charles Trail, and some land acquisitions, you know, obviously there's a couple of parcels abutting the town forest. There's some related to the trail. And, you know, there's some that might come up, you know, in the next month or year and that we might want to be prepared for. But that is what I have heard from everybody. Is that consistent?
I think it's consistent. Go ahead, Yolanda.
So I've been talking to a couple of other communities, and I mentioned this to Michael already. Part of what some of the other communities are doing is yes, they're listening to the boards and committees, but then they're also having a discussion with their community and with their citizens to say, you know, this money is coming. It's, at some point, we're going to have to pay for this money and we're all going to have to be paying for it. So getting input from the community. So I think some kind of listening session or an open session where we have a discussion, I think also a conversation with the school committee and how they're looking at using their dollars. Because as I've mentioned to Michael, I think it's super important that when we look at these dollars, we're not adding positions that then, once these dollars run out, we're going to have to continue paying for. So I think those, for me, those are sort of two next steps is a joint discussion with the school committee between us and, you know, between ourselves and them, but then also a discussion with the community to sort of say, okay, these are the kinds of things we can do. What do you support? And then how do we move forward with them?
So there's, there's a timeframe here as well, right? But it's fairly substantial?
Yeah. So we have to put in an initial report at the end of this calendar year. But technically, we don't have to have the funds designated until 2024, and they do not have to be spent till 2026.
And we still don't know all that we're supposed to or can do with it.
Right. That is, that is frustrating. I know everybody's working as hard as they can at the Department of Treasury. You know, one of the things that you're trying to do at the federal government level is try to create a process for all 50 states, a similar process for all 50 states, when all 50 states have very different ways of doing things and financing, like the whole county government thing. Most states have legitimate county governments to utilize. We don't, a lot of those were abolished in the late 90s. We still have, you know, obviously a few. But yeah, so we have, that's the case.
Any other, any other well-spent areas?
Did we mention, you know, sidewalks and things of that nature?
So sidewalks and paving has definitely been up there. I think I can create a nexus with sidewalks. Paving is going to be a little bit tougher, but.
Yeah, I think sidewalks is probably something that's almost universal in the community. Lots of, you know, we've always had lots of comments about, about lack of sidewalks or.
Or the condition.
Rehabilitation.
I agree. I think if we can, if we can do some of the sidewalks, I don't know, I put in my list to you, like, I don't know how limited we are with 135, but being able to put in sidewalks from, say, the middle school to the community center in that whole area. I know that that's been something that, okay, there we go, something that I know that's been on a lot of people's minds. And, you know, having a student walk from the middle school over to the community center is, it's.
Dangerous.
Yeah.
Well, it's worse because there's seniors that walk along 135 to get to the community center as well. So, you know, and that was actually sidewalks were part of the, the project designated for the Valentine property. As you recall, there were going to be sidewalks installed, but that, obviously, when, when that project didn't occur. But that's probably number one location.
Oh, I have to agree. I've been asking for that for quite some time, especially when we're talking about changing the intersection up there and adding the crosswalks up and sidewalks up in that area for years. So that would be, to me, that's a number one priority. And actually, coming back from the Public Safety Building site, walking up to the high school, the sidewalks along there, the ADA compliant ramp areas, they were made out of cement. They're all broken. They're all broken. So, I mean, we're not in compliance with, with, you know, with that. So I would say, if anything, if we have those monies available, I definitely would say a crosswalk plan to get that, to get those all corrected, especially if, you know, F and one, the project is completed, and then we put those sidewalks in, you know, it would just make it a lot easier, right there, a lot nicer. So I'm all for it. I'm all for it. So thank you all for your input and giving those to Michael.
I do have one other question. So from a next steps and timing perspective, what are your thoughts as far as, you know, potentially giving, getting some feedback from the community and other things, and also just starting to do some real planning with this?
Yeah. So I've thought about some of the things that you had said, Yolanda, and it looks like what some communities are doing is they're putting out a plan, like a draft plan to the community and getting feedback. So I think what we should do is in August, I think we should have a meeting with the school committee and FinCom. I can put together a draft plan based on the feedback that I've received. Hopefully after that meeting, we'll have some more feedback. We can revise this and then put it out to the community. I will say, one of the things that, you know, I'm trying to graphically represent is that, you know, we have other sources of funds. As you know, we cobbled together a lot of different ones for downtown. And could we use some ARPA funds for like a project that we currently have funding for, which in turn would free up that funding for other things that doesn't have the restrictions on it. So it's kind of like that chess, or more like a jigsaw puzzle that, you know, we're trying to put together. Because we do, you know, we do have opportunities, we do have other financial resources other than ARPA and, you know, a lot of, a lot of things that we need to do, finish up doing.
Well, and if there, if there are things that are covered by ARPA and we're spending other money on that, and if we can, you know, move money around and have something for something else, I think that makes perfect sense.
And I also want to state that the state government is actually getting ARPA, their own ARPA funds. And it looks like the direction the legislature wants to go in is distributing those funds to communities for projects and things of that nature, at least a substantial portion. So there could be opportunity for some of these projects to get more. So.
My mind just went to a different location. It just, it just went to a different location. We're good?
Yes.
Okay. All right. You're still on the hot seat. Discuss 1050 Main Street.
Have we heard anything back? You wanted to put this on the agenda. Why am I on the hot seat? No, it's 10 to 50 Main Street, just to give everybody an update. And I think the last correspondence that we had received from Mr. Gordon, who's the owner of that, of that property, stated that he had difficulty finding financing for the project that he had agreed to earlier. And so he wanted to see if the board would consider a higher unit count, maybe a lower, a commercial square footage as well. So, you know, I think the next steps is we either put together, you know, the subcommittee, we've got the names for the subcommittee, we can bring them in and have the subcommittee meet with them. The, the board could also have them come in and have a discussion. You know, since the last time we've had a discussion, we've received April's report regarding some of the economic, economic viability of the project. So I think that's certainly going to be factoring into the discussion. One thing I want to just be clear about is that nobody is advocating for taking down the granite buildings. I'm getting tired of people approaching me and saying, why are you tearing down the granite buildings? Nobody in town government has ever said that they wanted to tear down the granite buildings. We've talked about different ways of rehabbing them, keeping the facades, things of that nature. But I don't, I don't even know if the, I don't even remember if the applicant even stated that he wanted to take the granite buildings down.
Michael, he did, actually, he did at the very first meeting. And that was one of the things we pushed back immediately. And I have the list of things here that we discussed and that was important to the board. So I would challenge anybody out in the community that's, you know, misrepresenting or providing a false narrative, you know, to come before us and we can discuss it.
Yeah, it's frustrating because we spend time and energy on things that we already agree on. And so that sucks up time and energy that we can use to figure out solutions for problems that actually exist. I will say, Mr. Gordon seems very open to restoring the buildings, and he has been for a while, I think, because he knew everybody, that's, everybody wanted to.
First thing I said there, we had that coffee that time. You're not knocking him down. No way.
So just a couple, a couple other things too. So the last time Mr. Gordon came in front of us, it was January, and that was the last iteration of the plans. And so, you know, I know that the, when he initially, when he came to see us, we had talked about potentially having this at fall town meeting, which he would need to make sure he went in front of planning board and had our support as well before moving forward to town meeting. And as part of that was going to be, you know, public forums and getting public feedback. And that hasn't happened yet. And I know that he's kind of still in the process of putting together what his latest proposal is going to look like. So, so I, what is, what is the possibility that it would even be ready to go to fall town meeting at this point?
I think at this point, zero. And I think he's aware of that as well. So we would be looking at a spring 2022 town meeting.
I think, Michael, you know, it's one thing if he's not ready to represent, that's fine. We understand that. There's no point having him come in if he's not ready. But one discussion we should have, we haven't had yet, was April's report. And we might want to put that on maybe the next board meeting to, to have a discussion and review it. And, and I think we'd have a better, and the community would have a better idea of, of what the reality is of redeveloping a parcel like that. But, and I assume that the. But, and I assume that the subcommittee or at least our members, Yolanda and Rob, are prepared to meet as a group to start a discussion, but they don't know what they're discussing at this point.
Well, it's, in January, when we decided to set up the working group, we had a finite number of units that the board had wanted, commercial space that the board had wanted. We, we had basically the tentative agreements around several things. And, you know, part of this was working out the details, mainly the design, I think, was going to be the subcommittee. Of course, now that has changed a little bit. You have, you know, Mr. Gordon, who's actually saying, oh, I can't finance 200 units. Like, you know, I have to have 220 or 230. So the question is, is do we even want to go down that path? And if you want to have, you know, the subcommittee review that and then make a recommendation on what to do, I'm fine with going in that direction. Or have that discussion with the full board, because it's kind of like the full board's goals that you were trying to achieve, you know, whatever your flavor is.
I'd really, and I, I mentioned this to Michael, I think it's time for the subcommittee to start getting together. And it's time for us to have some public forums, right? I mean, Rich Gordon is telling us what he can and can't do, but this is something that then our community is going to have to support if we want to do that. So even if we're looking to do something next spring, let's get some initial information from the public as to what they think about this project. I mean, we're getting anecdotal information from people through various channels, but we haven't had a time where we've said, okay, come tell us what you think. Because I'm hearing both positives and, and I'm hearing people who don't want this at all, but I'm also hearing from people who support this project. So it's time to let the public give us some input and some feedback. Cause that may then help Rich Gordon as well, because he knows that he had, we have to get this zoning passed if, if he wants to redevelop this property. So my recommendation is we do the first meeting of the subcommittee, put a plan out to start a process of having some public forums. As we hear back from Rich, at the same time, I agree with Steve. I think it's time to bring April's report to our full board so we can discuss it. Because I think there's some information in there that the public needs to be aware of. And, and certainly we're all seeing that the need for commercial is changing and the type of commercial that is needed is changing. So granted, we're not doing this project for five years out. We're doing these projects for 15, 20, 50 years out. So that's what we need to think about as we're looking at this potential redevelopment for the property.
My only comment, excuse me, my only comment in response is that, you know, what are you, what is being presented? What are you discussing? There really, at this point, is no project in front of the town, literally. And it's different than, you know, let's say tomorrow night's planning board meeting where 100 Chestnut Street is going to be discussed, which it is a, he's got a, a project in front of the planning board. He's got plans and so on. And that's something that you can, that's tangible. Here, there's really nothing tangible. You're, all you're going to do is confirm this person doesn't want this project and this person does. But what project are we talking about? So I would just caution getting ahead, jumping ahead of something that we really don't know what will ultimately be. I think, you know, Michael, you, you have semi-regular contact with, with Rich Gordon. You know, find out what's going on at this point. And, you know, at our next meeting, again, recommend that we have a conversation about the report and just kind of get ahead of it.
Yeah. I, I agree with that, Steve. That's where I was going to comment, you know, what, what discussion is going to be had on what design? Because we don't have a design in front of us right now. We did, we did.
Even it's just the discussion of what we as a board have, have said that we want to see there, right? Just that discussion in a session where people can, we, you know, Michael just said it now. No one here on this board has said we want to tear down those buildings.
Right.
Right? So how many people are watching? Whereas if it's a forum and we can say, this is what we're looking at. That's, that's what, you know, I, I, I understand what you're saying, Steve. We don't have a, we don't have a, you know, specific project yet, but we know he wants to do a project.
So basically, basically what you're asking is let's have a public forum meeting with this board and the town about the miscommunication and the misinformation that's been spread out there and the actualities of the things that have been said and discussed by, by us as a board. And, and to me, I would not have a problem with that.
And to get feedback, you know, what are people thinking, you know? To, to Michael's point, I had two different conversations on Saturday when I was at the market. I had some people like, oh, no, we can't, you know, what do you mean 200 apartments? But then when you have the conversation with them about what that means and what it could mean for those buildings, they go, oh, right? They look at it differently. And then as I was leaving the market, someone else said, so I hear you want to tear those buildings down. And I said, well, I don't know where you hear that because none of the, no one on the board want to tear the granite buildings down. So it's, it's a combination of getting feedback and also giving correct information to more people.
Not a problem. Well, one, I, I think the last thing I would add is whether we go before the subcommittee or the board, we need to kind of establish the baseline. Because we're kind of like in this no man's land right now of, okay, Rich, what are you going to? We said, we kind of agreed on 200 units and kind of having the discussion moving forward from there. But now you're saying something different. So let's establish the baseline and say whoever he comes before, this is the project that we're discussing. 200 units, 34,000 square feet of commercial with the design that he last presented, which I think we all agree needs a lot of work. And we'll just do that and say, you know, if you've got some different thoughts and changes to that, then just put it out there.
But I also think discussion of April's report.
Oh, that's key.
Very important because that could impact some of the decisions.
Absolutely.
But I, I, I was just going to say, I don't, I think that we need to have a better sense from Rich, what he can do before we go to the public. Because I think if Rich is going to come and say, I can't do it for less than 230 units. And, you know, then we're going back, then, you know, then it's, we need to kind of, we kind of need to know where he stands before we go to the public. Because, you know, the public is already thinking that so much commercial is going to be eliminated. And so if we, we need to have a better sense of financially what Rich is actually proposing before we, before we go to the public.
I, I think for me, this is somewhat similar with, to the UGC scenario as well. We, we established what our baseline was and we stuck to our, our development agreement format. And I don't see this as any different, except as Yolanda said, reviewing April's report may give us, you know, the ability to maybe modify some of our, our positions in certain areas. And, and I get that, that's okay. But, you know, until he decides whether he wants to do a 40R or he just wants to do a development, you know, he doesn't necessarily need a zoning change to do a development on his property. So, you know, at this case, at this point, we, we, we're flying in the dark here, right?
Okay. Would you like to bring it before the full board first, then the subcommittee? Or do it the other way around? Talking about any, let's handle them all together.
I think it could be simultaneous. I think next day, next, at our next meeting, we discuss April's report. And, and at the same time, have the subcommittee have their first meeting to sort of talk about, you know, make sure everyone on the subcommittee is on the same page as to what has conspired already and what we're thinking moving forward.
Okay. That works, that works. Yeah, that makes sense. At least you have a definitive path to take on. That's fine.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all. Good discussion. Our next item is providing funding for a barbecue at the senior center for our seniors in the amount of $500 from the selectmen's gift account. That's a no brainer. I'm sorry, it's a no brainer.
We almost put it in consent.
You know, I think just to, this should be a little background here before we just automatically.
Thank you.
Give away money, right? I think that's the appropriate way. So really what we're doing is, is supplementing. The Council on Aging is looking to put kind of a end of summer barbecue together down at the pavilion. They're in the formulation stage right now. They're working with, with the Friends of the Council. And there was a request made during one of my visitations up there for some support. So I have information here and they've got it broken down based on the number of, of seniors that, that are, that plan to participate. It's going to be, I think they're trying to do it at no cost to the seniors. If they can, if they can't, it'll be minimal. But you know, when there's no cost, there'd be a lot of seniors participating. So, so this is really just a portion of what the total cost would be. So that's the request and hopefully everybody sees fit to support it.
Well, if it's the end of the year celebration, did you want to increase that figure?
That was going to be my question.
I would not. I think we would want to, I would expect the Friends of the Council on Aging to, to be the primary funding source here.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just supplementing that.
Okay. Sounds good.
Do you have a potential date?
No date yet there. Again, they're still in the planning stage of they, you know, I think maybe they were waiting for this before they, they moved forward with the date.
Well, I can remember years ago, we used to do them. And we would have to go out there and cook on those grills. And they'd be waiting. And they were waiting.
Early too.
And very early.
It's funny, Joe, you say that because the, the weekly Monday lunches been going on right through COVID. They started to do live lunches as well. So it's, it's grab and go and live. People that come live, you know, lunches aren't served till noon time. They're there at 11:15 and they're ready to, they're ready to go.
They're hungry, they're ready, yeah.
Well, that's like the lion's breakfast, right? We don't start serving until nine, but many of them, you know, maybe the times, you know, 8:30, quarter to nine, they're sitting there.
Well, I'll entertain a motion to approve the $500 request for the senior center barbecue for us. Gifted seniors up there.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's four, zero and one absent.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for bringing it up. I think it's a great idea.
I'll let the chair of the council.
Let us know so we can go help out if necessary.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I've got all new utensils to cook, so I'm ready to rock. Next on the agenda is discuss providing a letter of support from the green infrastructure. This was an email. I don't know if you all got this, but I, I got it as, as cheer. And it has to do with the, the green future goals and the local leadership. And it's a sign-on letter. And it has to do with municipal capacities and the contact person is Kerry Caton or Tim Cronin from the Green Future Now campaign. And basically what it says, it's, it's a letter about the undersigned elected and appointed officials of the municipalities across the Commonwealth here to support the immediate passage of the Green Future Act and achieving a green future with infrastructure for workforce investments and its House Bill number 3292. And as local offices, we face the realities of climate change and environmental injustice. And it goes on and on. I've read it. I thought it was a great idea to do it. I, I talked to, actually I got a call from Rob Shear. Rob got it, a similar email. So he said he, he would support this as well. So, did you get a copy of that? Okay. Did I, I passed it out? So any comments of concerns or?
No, I think it's a good thing to support. I was just, I was going to, I was going to say, Joe, that you were going to make Rob proud by, by bringing that up on an agenda tonight.
Yep. Yep. So to me, I thought it was a no brainer, to be honest with you.
I, I agree.
Okay, good. So I'll. Okay, great.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's four, zero, one unavailable. Hope he's having a great vacation.
But in spirit.
But in spirit.
He's definitely proud.
He's very proud of me right now, for sure, for sure. Moving right along. Priority project updates, rail transit district. UGC and Charlie Brook Trail.
So UGC, they voted last night? It's going to take a while to get used to this. So the zoning board of appeals voted to approve a decision last night for UGC. Obviously it contains everything that we talked about in the development agreement, including the buffer zones. I guess there was a little bit of confusion regarding a trail that was going to go besides that, beside the driveway.
Yeah. I, I watched the, and I actually, I spoke to that.
I heard. So I did.
So it was, and it was a legitimate question. And, but, you know, I think that it was, there was confusion by the individual that was thinking that, that there was automatically a trail going to be placed through the buffer area. And it may or may not happen depending on ultimately where the, with the Upper Charles Trail configures. But, you know, what, you know, I, my comments were purely that my best recollection was we never discussed that as a, as part of the project. And, but UGC did agree to if there's a trail there, that they would provide connector points to the trail from their complex is the way it ended. So everybody seemed to be fine with that.
Yeah. And I think, like I said, we did a lot of work with the neighborhood to try to, you know, come up with something that would be palatable for them. And I think that's all incorporated. And I think the ZBA even established some additional measures, mitigation measures as well. So I can send you a copy of the decision if you want. It's pretty boring, but.
No. I, I think it'd be nice to read. I think it's, we put a lot of time in evidence. Nice to see the, the results come out the way we, we hoped it would, so.
And I'll get a, there's an appeal period, obviously, that goes for that. I'm not sure if the board has been privileged to be on some of the emails between the landowner and the developer or their respective attorneys. But there is not surprisingly a disagreement between the two. Maybe some fists will be thrown for that one, Steve, to resolve that one. But, you know, we'll see if it goes through without being appealed. So there's that, well, that, that'll definitely hold up the project. If it goes through, right? Well, if there is an appeal, yes.
Wait, so the landowner is questioning the project?
Yes. Whether they had the authority to file.
Their UGC had the authority to file the plan?
Looks at a dime, tries to turn it into 11 cents on the table.
Yeah. It is crazy.
So this, this process has been going on for two and a half years?
Three years.
Three years. And when did he determine that this was an issue? Last week?
I think it's been a few months prior because I think there's been some discussions between UGC and Mr. Gainer that we weren't privileged to be a part of, thankfully. But yeah, I mean, I think, you know, you know, the players involved. And I, I think once you think about it, you probably won't be surprised at all. So, and it's also important, I, I think this development, obviously we have funding coming through in terms of the development as part of the development agreement. Also, when UGC closes on the property, we, we will also be receiving $400,000 because we had a mortgage on the property based on the MBTA road averages or overages, I should say. So, you know, there's, you know, some, a financial piece at stake here as well.
And that's come, that's not coming from UGC though, right?
No, that would be coming from Mr. Gainer.
Gainer. So, okay. So why can't he give us that now?
Cause he, he has to close on the property?
Oh, that's right. That's right. That's right.
So quick question. So this development's 180 units. All of those are going to be counting towards our subsidized housing inventory.
That's correct.
Towards our 10%. My understanding was when it, when it got permitted, that those numbers count towards our, our inventory, correct?
Once, once the comprehensive permit is issued, which we're well on the, I mean, obviously they voted on it. So I think it just, we have to go through the appeal period. Once that is done, yes, we can add those 180 units. Um, once that is done, yes, we can add those 180 units to our inventory, which will give us two years safe harbor. And make a pretty big jump into our, into, closer to our 10% level. You know, the 10% level is actually very attainable if we do it smartly.
But then they actually have to be built, right? Within the two years. And if they're not built and they don't add to our numbers, then we're.
Yeah, there is a, there is a time period because this happened with Robert Hill Way.
Yeah.
Once the comprehensive permit was issued, actually, no, I take that back. It wasn't Robert Hill Way, it was, um, the Petries project at the Valentine property. So.
Oh, because they had their permit, but.
Yeah, they had their permit and then.
Well, I think that this project, you know, I know I've been working on this since I've been on the board for over two years now. And I know a lot of people have been working on it before me. But I, I think that this, me personally, I feel like this is a project we can be proud of. To have 180 units dedicated to seniors and be able to have, um, 25% affordable to our seniors, I think is a big deal. I know you, you forwarded an email to us about a conversation you had with seniors over at the community center who were, um, very appreciative of the Robert Hill Way project. I think this one, this one might be this, a similar, uh, get similar feedback just partly because of the affordability, partly because of the community and partly because, um, UGC does offer quite a bit of services to the seniors that I think will be, will be really valuable to them.
Yeah, you know, the affordability piece is, is even better because it's not just at the 80% level. It's at somewhere at the 60 and somewhere at the 50. So, you know, I think, uh, again, I mean, we formulated a plan and we stuck to it. And, you know, I guess it begs the question for me about, uh, you know, tomorrow night, there's a project coming before the, the, uh, planning board, which is 200 units, uh, that on, on Chestnut Street. And, uh, you know, I think there's a lot of concerns about, uh, justifiable concerns about that project. And, uh, I would hope that the planning board will take a similar approach that, that we've taken. I mean, we don't have, we won't have any direct engagement in this process other than, you know, our own personal opinions. But, uh, you know, I would hope that they would, uh, approach this in a similar way.
I agree. I agree. Anything else?
Other than that, Charlie Brook Trail is continuing construction. Thanks to Jen and Peter Matchak, who is taking this on, uh, this project on, at least from the staff perspective.
When do we see that getting completed and available and?
Likely late September, early October, I think. It's obviously going to be a little weather dependent, um, but that's what we're hoping for.
I would have said early September, so it's good that Jen said that. Yeah.
We know you like to be optimistic sometimes and.
I think we classified it as zealous.
Who, Mr. Conservative?
Zealous, there you go.
You're talking about Mr. Conservative over here.
Zealous. Just with dollar signs.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um, but no, it's, I, I put some pictures up on social media. I actually sent them to Rob before I did that just because I knew he would be excited. He was excited. But it looks great. Um, I think they're going to work on installing the bridge next that goes over the, you know, the brook there. And one section of the Upper Charles Trail will be completed, the first section. It's a milestone.
It's been a long, long haul for years of efforts and, uh,
I think I was in high school when we were talking about this.
But, uh, it's been, you know, you gotta, you know, obviously staff has done a tremendous amount of work to, to get the trail to this point, you know, uh, point to Jen in particular for all her efforts. Uh, but, you know, I should, we should acknowledge the committee as well. And, you know, they've hung in there for all these years and, uh, want to give credit to, actually to Joel Arbaitman for, you know, his passion and his, uh, pushing and pushing for this over, over many years. So, uh, kudos to Joel and the whole committee.
Absolutely.
I say too, because isn't the path along Memorial Drive part of it?
I believe so. Yeah, despite whether you go up on the southern side of UGC or if you go up around it.
Right.
It's, it's going to be part of it, yep. The multimodal path.
And Joe, you joked that, you know, you've been talking about this since high school. We actually have, we've been active at this for six years. And as I tell anyone I talk to, Holliston took 20 years and they had an empty trail bed. So if we have ours done in 20 years without a trail bed, I, I think we'll be doing well.
Doing pretty well, yeah.
Oh, no, I agree, I agree.
So that is all I have on the rail transit district. Downtown, I just want to give everybody an update on construction. So the Giochio is going to, basically they're still in the process of installing vaults and conduit in Main Street and Front Street. So as part of that, we're, we're going to have to reroute traffic. Hopefully it hasn't been too upsetting to people. I thought they'd done a pretty, pretty good job of laying it out and we've tried to put out construction updates so people know and are not surprised. But anyway, they're continuing to touch forward.
I have a question. Are, can we consider or should we consider actually detouring people? I mean, I, I know, you know, if you come down in front of Town Hall when they were doing that construction, wouldn't it have made sense to detour people to Cherry Street? And especially if they're going to Pleasant Street or something like that?
We have detoured people. So for example, when they were working a lot on, and there's, it's actually still a detour. They're working alongside where Main Street becomes Myrtle Street. So what they've been redoing is, uh, detouring people down Ray Marquetti and then onto Concord and then in that way.
I have, I haven't seen any of the detouring. I've just seen, you know, single lane and, um, and then not always paying attention to the lights, same with 126, right? I mean, and I know we're going to talk about that, but, you know, you sit at the light from Elliot Street onto 126 and because they're down by the roundabout, they're not watching the traffic there. So the light turns green for the people to cross 126 and you have traffic sitting there because they haven't let them through, so.
So, yeah, I know that they're constantly evaluating traffic, TMPs, traffic management plans, another acronym I get to throw in there. So it's, uh, it's something that they're always actively looking on. And we meet every Thursday and, you know, have a discussion about that. Okay. Um, so that is that on downtown. Let's see, so the next is public safety in Mendez. Um, so the public safety building, I think anybody who's driven by there has seen that, you know, concrete's going up. Even some of the high walls are going up. Uh, we've been advised that probably what in August, we're going to see steel.
Second weekend August, they anticipate starting to erect steel.
Right. So that's obviously a new stage and something that we can be very excited about. As I think everybody knows, we did have a significant runoff event, stormwater runoff event during the storm. Um, I went by it, it was, it was pretty bad. So we met with the Concom, uh, at their next meeting on Monday night and, uh, you know, acknowledged the fact that whatever was constructed, even though it was constructed to plans, it wasn't sufficient enough for a storm of that magnitude. So, um, our contractor and our project manager, they put together a new, basically a new plan with some enhanced stormwater control methods. And Concom and Joe and Steve and myself, we went out with them on Saturday to do a site walk and make sure that everything was okay and that the plan was okay. And, um, so we expect to receive approval on that at the next Concom meeting. So it's, it's the way the process should work out. You know, nobody was trying to do any, nobody was negligent by any means. We followed the plan, the plan that everybody thought was going to be sufficient. It turned out that it was not. You go back, you revise the plan and you see if that works. I don't know if you guys wanted to.
I just want to say that the, uh, the people that we've contracted, uh, CTA, HKT, PA, I couldn't be any pleased, any more pleased with, with their, uh, expertise and, and their work and devotion to this, to this, uh, project. We're definitely getting our money's worth from, from this group. And, um, they take it just as serious as we do. And, um, they, you know, this is their pet baby right now too. So, you know, they, they take their pride into seeing this structure going up and, and working diligently and making sure that it's done properly and not just another job and giving it a number and moving on. So I'm, I'm very happy with it.
Yeah, I, I agree, Joe. I think, uh, I think we were all pleased with the onsite folks that are there. You know, we've had a chance to meet them, uh, several times now and, uh, you know, I think we're in good hands, certainly with, with Vertex and our project manager onsite, Bill Nangle.